Yes. Next, sign up, please.
I'm taking over for a minute.
Thank you, Jessica.
Citizen participation, citizens wishing to address the board or on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. Our first speaker is Stephanie Butler on books.
Welcome back, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Good evening, Stephanie Butler. And tonight, I'm speaking to you as not only a parent, but also as a duly elected delegate for the city of Dearborn. Because the issue of the books is a statewide, I think it's a national problem. But I didn't realize until I started looking into it, how much it was in our district. So I just want to start out by saying I am very happy to see progress being made. I thank you, Dr. Maleko, for that. I thank the other members that are involved in that. That truly is a solid team, and I cannot understate how much I appreciate their attentives to this and their concern. So I want to say, children are simply not mature enough to process violent, incestuous, derogatory, controversial, racial commentary, descriptive drug use, self-harm, suicide, and explicit sexual activities in these books. And yes, high school kids are still considered children. They are minors. They are not adults, and they are not in college. We need to use some common sense when choosing texts to be studied in the classrooms as well as the school libraries. Children developing brains do not need to be assaulted with this notion of sexual violence. Educators are supposed to protect children from violence. The American Academy of Pediatric Studies and develops policies pertaining to youth from birth through age 21, and specifically lists books as part of the mass media environment examined by their institution. The AAP states that exposure to violence in the media has a significant risk on the health of children and adolescents, and can contribute to aggressive behavior, desensitization, we can't even talk, to violence, nightmares, and fear of being harmed. It is also associated with teen pregnancy and promiscuity. The AAP has also called on schools specifically to do more in the way of preventing young people from being exposed to and negatively impacted by harmful media, because there is no evidence that would suggest these books or any of the kind of content is proven to be beneficial or not harmful to children. On the contrary, there are numerous studies from a wide range of fields showing a wide range of harmful effects and risks. Through some bizarre loopholes in educational policy, books and other materials like it are being allowed in the schools. It is able to slip past the checks and balances that we have in place to protect children from violence, because even though it does not meet the common standard of decency, it is not a form of entertainment. It's all in the name of English. No matter the level of filth in the book, it's English. Therefore, it must be allowed. Using just the smallest amount of common sense, we can deduce that if the books cannot be read out loud in the class, could not be viewable if it was a movie, and couldn't be played on the stereo if it was a CD, then why is it okay for it to be read and discussed in school of all places? In fact, according just to one lawyer, if the incidents in this book, or others like it, were movies, or a picture, there would be very clear-cut case for prosecution for child pornography. I am all for freedom of speech, but I draw the line when it comes to children and minors. Our schools are supposed to be working in tandem with parents to enrich children's lives and teach them valuable lessons, not including introducing them to graphic sexual violence with no mental health resources or context provided. Of course, if a book is also chosen that would require mental health, again, you have a flashing red light that basically tells you this is not appropriate for children. Not only that, but it's irresponsible to introduce this literature to kids who you have no idea of knowing their past experiences with rape, incest, or violence. Imagine the scenario where you send a child who has been abused at home to read the illicit portion of the book, and he or she not only has to read it and be confused by the portrayal of the perp as a normal human being, but the child also happens to be living with their very own perpetrator who happens to be a family member. People and educators who are in favor of this kind of book are misinformed. They are perhaps not aware or understand the social science and medical research that should just, it is not an appropriate choice for the classroom or the libraries. And yet, let's use the ever-elusive common sense here. If you have a movie that was rated R, a child under 17 could not get in to view it without a parent. It certainly couldn't be shown in the classroom, so why in the world would it be okay to let the child read a book that contains the same sort of things that require parental authority? I do not support banning books. First and foremost, my mission is to inform parents on what is in these books being made available to children in schools. Parents can use this information to provide the proper guidance to children reading any of these books. Parents can also use this information to individually or through groups engage with school boards to determine what work should be made available to their children while under the custodial care of their schools. Any books that may be excluded from the library, school libraries, would still be available in public libraries or in stores for interested students and parents to procure with their parent consent. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the book banning title is an easy way to say, hey, look over here at this. But I mean, we pulled a book from the shelves. It was that bad. There are thousands more like it. So I just want to say again, I appreciate you doing the right thing, and I applaud you for it, and the staff, because it matters. So, thank you.
Next, Ms. Anne Clark, representing herself, would like to speak to the board about introducing herself as a candidate for Wayne County Commissioner.
Before you continue, I just question whether or not this is appropriate. And I do not believe that it is appropriate to bring political into this forum.
I was just going to introduce myself. That's all.
A quick introduction, please.
Okay. My name is Anne Clark, and I'm a 40-year resident of Dearborn, and I'm running for Wayne County Commissioner, District 13. And I look forward to serving my community.
Thank you. Ms. Stephanie.
Yep.
This is the blue card. Thank you for your participation. May I have the next item, please?
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I have questions on item 10, please.
Okay. We also need to pull, I've got to find the number. Yes.
Yeah, where we have to name.
Right, we need to pull 15. And you had a question on number 10, was it?
Yes. Are we pulling 10 or just asking?
Questions on 10.
Questions on 10, pull 15. Any others? Okay. If you could read them.
Okay. Move that action items numbered 1 through 14, 16 through 23 be approved as recommended in this agenda if necessary, with the exception of 15.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Barry and supported by Trustee D'Ambrogio. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. May I have a...
Oh, he has a question.
We have a question.
I'm sorry, yes. Go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Madam President. The question is pertaining to this question that we were all briefed on, on the security supervisor position. So I've already asked my questions, but I'd like more clarification as far as the salary schedule. Was this the same salary schedule as the previous employee that we had?
When Ms. Olivas did come up and...
I think we have, that's number 11, not number 10.
11 was the question.
Was it number 11? I apologize.
Okay. That wasn't pulled, but it was questioned. Yeah, okay.
No, it's not the same salary schedule. The salary schedule that Mr. John Leacher had been on is a cabinet, exempt cabinet, Schedule A, it's called. He was the only one on that salary schedule. We had been trying to phase it out for some time, not use that one anymore. And then...
There was another administrator years ago on it when we had, when Mr. Weston had converted, so it was done for different reasons at the time.
Yeah.
But yeah, it was very...
And then, Business Services has gone through restructuring quite a few times over the last three or four years, because their positions are becoming more and more difficult to fill. And this particular position was posted three times for a total of 23 applicants. We continued to repost it because we weren't getting applicants. We did comparison studies with other districts to find out what they're offering for comparable positions. And then we switched to these two. There's actually two salary schedules listed on the posting, and that was to give flexibility to be able to recruit and retain in such a competitive market.
And you're going to see Mr. Wall, and I know with HR, he's been talking about the fact of, you know, some restructuring we need to do because of the competitive market with our current employees as well.
What I also understand is that we were supposed to have another position related to security that was to be approved, but it was delayed until next meeting.
That's correct.
And that, for that money, when I talked to Mr. Wall, he was mentioning that this would come from a separate fund.
Correct. That's for the position, the capital, what's the other position called?
Mr. Wall's a capital improvement, I believe.
Capital and contract information.
Oh, capital and contract information. So when we were going out for a bond in the past, this position would have gone, had the bond passed, this position would have been desperately needed. So we never filled that position. It's been vacant all year long. And so that material, that money from that unfilled position would be used to fund an additional assistant supervisor for health, safety, and security. Given the times of everything happening in the world and the size of our district, we thought that that would be appropriate at this time.
And there was a consensus. And we, the reason why we waited was because we weren't done with the process. You know how we said we're not going to rush? We still had some calls to make and other things, and we didn't want to rush it to this board meeting.
So this position would be coming from Mr. Wall, correct me. Is it coming from the Essar funds that we're getting the help with? This is for next week, but it's related to this position.
So I understand. Which position are you referring to?
This is for the officer that we're hiring or pending.
Well, why are we discussing that now?
Because this is, this is being aligned to this position as well. They're going to be working...
That's not on the agenda.
I understand, but that's not on the agenda tonight. We shouldn't be questioning it now.
I just want to make sure that we're, for the position that we're hiring today, I had some questions on, and I wanted clarifications.
Okay, then direct the question to that. That's why I'm confused as to who you're referring to.
Right, right. So that position is going to be aligned to security. So we had one employee as...
That's not the one we're questioning right now. Question what's on the agenda.
They were supposed to be hired on the same day, but...
Well, they're not.
I can speak to that. We weren't able to complete reference checks and agree on a salary pending board approval in time to get it. So we turn in the agenda for this meeting a week in advance. So the HR team meets the Monday prior to a board meeting. So we met last Monday to review the agenda for this board meeting. So that eliminates one more week that we could work through, because we turned them in to Joanne a week prior. So I just didn't want to rush it. And we had to agree, and I needed to check that, finish the reference checks and things. So...
Okay. I'll leave my questions for that position until it's coming through next meeting.
Thank you. Sure. And if you have any questions you'd like to ask, I can always include it in board briefs as well.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know I tried to give, you know, heads up by giving the history of this topic in board briefs, you know, and why we weren't moving forward with it this time.
And as we read our board briefs and do our due diligence, Dr. Maleko is always available for questions throughout. Trustee Barry.
Madam President, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Thank you to our constituents for paying attention. I did reach out to Mr. Wall earlier today. Actually, I didn't remember five. It was regarding to recommendation action from the June 20 meeting that we approved. We approved it with a contingency. And action item number five today is a change order. The change order adds another $31,000. Had nothing to do with the contractors. It was explained to me by Mr. Wall. It was just that the state asked for more specifications, more shooting specifications. Instead of arguing that, which Tom, Mr. Wall felt that we can win that argument, but it was going to delay us, and this is a project that we wanted to move forward. So for the additional $31,000.
Yeah.
$31,000, I think it was the right decision. I just want to make that comment because it was brought to my attention earlier this afternoon.
Yeah, sometimes the state does change our plans.
Yeah, they should change our plans and maybe provide the funds for it, change our plans, but it doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way. Never does.
Non-funding mandates. Always been an issue.
Thank you.
So we're, yeah, we're ready to...
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe? Trustee Watts, yes? President McDonald?
Yes. Now, if you would go back to item 15, please.
Item 15. Recommended action. Move that the Board of Education select the following four trustees as a voting delegate.
And three alternates.
Sorry, excuse me. And three alternates, yes.
So it's all seven of us.
So we can volunteer.
I nominate Trustee Thorpe.
Yes, we do have a...
We do, we do have, we do do that.
So absolutely, Trustee Thorpe may be on the... Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you want to...
Trustee Thorpe, Mr. Wall and I are presenting at that conference on our budget model as well.
Don't take the fun out of it. I'm most likely attending to, President McDonald, I'm most likely attending to, so I'll volunteer for that, too.
Okay.
No one else is volunteering out?
Yeah, we'll need a motion.
We've got, well, finish reading the full...
Well, you've got to get finished the names.
This is to represent our Board of Education, so people know.
And to represent our Board of Education at the MASP Delegate Assembly to be held on Thursday, October 20, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Grand Travis Resort and Spa in Acme.
Okay, now, we can't move it until we have names filled.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so we've got Jim.
Two more names.
Two more.
Jim and Hussein.
You're too interested.
And Pat.
And Pat.
I'll be an alternate.
We're the three alternates.
Okay.
We still need one more.
No, we need four.
Oh, we need four.
That's, that's seven of us.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, you need a fourth for the voting delegates.
Oh, yes, okay.
Who wants to...
I will not be able to attend. I've attended that conference many times, but this year I cannot. So, Trustee Watts, thank you for volunteering.
How are you going to read the names?
And we're alternates.
Yes. Okay. Would you read that motion, please, Trustee Watts?
All right. So move that the Board of Education select the following four voting delegates. Trustee Thorpe, Trustee Barry, Trustee D'Ambrogio, and Trustee Watts. And the three alternatives, Trustee Petchikoff, Trustee McDonald, and Trustee Moses. To represent our Board of Education at the MASP Delegate Assembly to be held on Thursday, October 20, 2022, at 7:00 PM, the Grand Travis Resort and Spa in Acme.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. I have the motion by Trustee Barry and supported by Trustee Petchikoff. May I have a roll call, please?
No, that was Trustee...
I said it too, but you could...
Okay, that's fine.
It doesn't matter.
Either one.
I didn't hear it.
I heard this ear, I don't put aside.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe? Trustee Watts, yes? President McDonald?
Yes.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of blanket purchase orders per Board Report 22-21. Number three, approval of an award to Graduation Alliance. Number four, approval of an award to Douglas Equipment. Number five, approval of change orders per Board Report 22-22. Number six, approval of change orders per Board Report 22-23. Number seven, approval of an award to Global Green Service Group and Next Generation Environmental. Number eight, approval and award to Superior Ground Cover. Number nine, approval of an award to Purvis and Foster. Number 10 to 13, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 14, approval of summer school graduates. Number 15, approval of voting delegates to the MASP Delegate Assembly. Number 16, approval of donations. And this is why we're all here. Number 17, appointment of assistant principal at Bryant Middle School. Number 18, appointment of assistant principal at Dearborn High School. Number 19, appointment of assistant principal at Smith Middle School. Number 20, appointment of assistant principal at Stout Middle School. Number 21, appointment of assistant principal at William Ford Elementary School. Number 22, appointment of assistant principal at Woodworth Middle School. And number 23, appointment of Director of Accounting.
Thank you, Secretary Watts. I am going to pass it on to Superintendent Maleko to introduce our new hires as assistant principals.
Yes, for sure. So this is exciting. We have, I know we have family members here, and we do have a lot in this time of year, in the summer, which is why I appreciate the board signing the meetings up. We have, we are finishing our staffing. And so we have a lot of candidates, and we're going to call them up individually, but we want to congratulate them to their new positions. I'm first going to call it Ms. Caitlin Ball, the Assistant Principal at Dearborn High.
Drum sphere.
Hi. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm very blessed, and I'm looking forward to be at Dearborn High.
Thank you.
We have Maha Fayed, the new Assistant Principal at Smith Middle School.
Good evening, President McDonald, trustees, Dr. Maleko. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the district as the new Assistant Principal at O.S. Smith. I'm excited to continue to learn, grow, and support alongside the leadership of Principal Mark Rumel, the entire Viking staff, students, and parents. I look forward to building relationships and continuing to guide, motivate, and inspire the staff, students along the way. With every milestone reached, I can't but recognize and acknowledge everyone that helped along the way. With my mathematical brain, I was putting a whole matrix together, but I said I need to slow down a little bit. So first and foremost, I want to thank God for all his blessings. Secondly, my parents and my family, my mom and dad, for always instilling that core values are the guiding principles in life. They always did that with, they always led by example, and they modeled for their five Ms. Manal, Munir, Malik, Maha, and Muhammad. I can't, I'm going to take a minute. So my internship mentees, mentors and mentors who allowed me to learn and grow through experiences and reflections, they all led through confidence and dedication and passion for the vision of students first. Thank you to my lifelong mentor, Reema Yunus, and Fatimi Faraj, and my internship leaders, Reema Hassan, Donna Jacobic, for always guiding and helping me out, as well as to their APs, Sam Daklallah, Kamal Bazi, Umar Kaid, Kaid Abdullah, and Aaron Fay. To all the teachers that I've worked with along the way, hats off to all of you guys. I appreciate and will continue to support you all along. To all my former principals, the middle school IC group, the best support system, they taught me and they exemplified with the true definition of what teamwork is. Dr. Maleko, Mrs. Masam Ali, Mrs. Masam Ali, the executive directors, all of you, thank you for always entrusting, believing, and giving feedback and, you know, just working with all of us. And last but not least, my biggest cheerleaders, my biggest supporters, my backbones and my rocks, my husband, Ali Fayad, who always gave the best advice and always mentored me all along the way. And my children, Mira, Nadine, Husein, and Jenna, who always inspired me to be the best version of myself. I thank you for this opportunity.
And as I'm calling up more of the assistants, you heard about the intern program, and we, a couple of years ago, we had to cut it during the pandemic. I do think we have one of the best grow-your-own program in administration, one of the best around. I know, Trustee Barry, years ago, we talked about. And that's why our internal people tend to come ahead, because it shows in the final interview when they come up with me. And I could see it this time around, that the growth that a lot of these individuals, because I've been following a lot of them, and I know them, and I've seen the growth when they come to me for the final round versus other times or through the committee. So we should be proud of that, and I thank the board for their support of that program. Next, we have Nazreen Najim, Assistant Principal at William Ford Elementary. I know she was so excited when I called her. She tends to come to all our board meetings as well.
Well, it's nice to be up here to finally talk this time.
What did you do before? Listen.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President McDonald, Dr. Maleko, our guests here today, and those viewing tonight's meeting from home. I am humbled and honored to be up here this evening as I accept my new position as Assistant Principal at William Ford Elementary. I am up here tonight because I have had the privilege of being surrounded by several influential mentors and role models. I want to take this opportunity to first thank my mom, who's in the audience, who has instilled the importance of education in me at a very young age. I would like to thank my family, who are very upset that they're not here tonight, friends, mentors, and colleagues for providing me with a strong support system. This achievement would not be possible without each of your influence. I also wanted to take the time to thank the Nowland, Maples, and Dearborn High communities. Thank you for supporting me throughout my journey and achieving this milestone. To my new William Ford family, I am beyond thrilled to have the opportunity to work with each and every single one of you. Last but not least, I wanted to thank the interview committees and the board for allowing me the opportunity to serve the district, to serve this district as we continue to inspire, educate, and celebrate our students together. I am so excited for this district.
We can tell. Congratulations.
And well done, Mom. I saw you out there waving.
She was so excited, she almost tripped coming inside the door, I saw her. Sorry to call you out.
Everyone was appreciative, but her reaction when I called her was something I'll never forget. Nazreen Karoli is the new Assistant Principal at Bryant Middle School.
I wanted to thank you all for having me here today. Thank you, Dr. Maleko, and the trustees, for this tremendous opportunity. I am excited to work with the Bryant staff, students, parents, and Mr. Dennison. I want to thank my family for their continued support. They have always supported me every step of the way. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm looking forward to continuing to grow as a leader in this district, and it's just going to be a tremendous school year. Thank you all for everything. Thank you.
And we have Melissa Kobesi, the new Assistant Principal at Woodworth Middle School.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Maleko, and your team. I'd like to thank everybody for everything that has happened along this, my educational journey. The best thing that I've always said that I love about Dearborn is the support that I get from this district. And just, just standing in this room, I see so many of my mentors. So thank you so much. My family, thank you for everything. Thank you for bearing with me through all these processes. My children, sitting there for two hours in the back, my eyes looking at me, and she's like, Mom, when can we go? We're ready to go, Mom. I am incredibly honored to be the Assistant Principal at Woodworth. I'm looking forward to beginning this journey with my new family. Of course, we'll miss my old families, but, you know, they will always be there. Mr. Higgins will be getting emails and calls from me daily, and Ms. Farhat, you as well. Thank you so much for everything.
We have Mr. Brent Proctor, the new Assistant Principal at Stout Middle School.
Hello. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Maleko. I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to be an Assistant Principal at Stout Middle School. I, too, was an intern at Stout this past year. While at Stout, I had the opportunity to learn a lot, working under Mrs. Abdou Bakay, working with the staff, working with the students, parents alike. I feel all of that through the internship program has allowed me to kind of come full circle and understand what this position entails. I look forward to working further at Stout Middle School, continuing this educational journey, working with the new Falcon family that I've grown to know. Thank you.
So we have Ms. Sarah Cortez, the new Director of Accounting, and she was someone recruited from outside the district.
Hello. Okay, so I didn't really write a whole speech, but my family is watching this on live stream, and they're like, well, I hope you wrote one now. No pressure. Yeah, so, no, I really just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm really excited to be coming here. I'm coming to you from Van Buren Schools. And so since everyone did it as well, I'm going to thank my family, my husband, and my mom for supporting my move over here. I've been a little nervous about it, but I'm very, very excited.
Welcome.
And I know we had the, I don't think she's here yet, but she may have been on her way. If she arrives, we'll have her. Okay, our health, safety, security.
She is on her way here.
Is she, okay.
Yes, she's on her way.
Okay, so as soon as she arrives, if President, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
If we're still in touch.
Congratulations to all the.
Congratulations.
See the excitement, first day of school coming, we got new assistant principals, we're ready to go.
The enthusiasm is contagious.
Absolutely, we need that.
Next item, please.
Next item, acknowledgements of correspondence.
Next item.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Did we have any reports?
They don't have a report, but this is, we have a committee meeting, President's Evaluation Committee meeting coming up before the next meeting, so I want to announce it, so it's public.
The college president.
At the college, yes. Well, there's only one president.
I know, but the community might not.
What's that?
The community at large might not know what you're referring to.
There's only one president in the city of Dearborn. President Cavallino, but, okay, yeah, the meeting, the committee meeting will be September eighth, eleven-thirty at the college. Just need to publicly announce it, so we don't have to post it. I did give you some homework, please take a look at it. I can, the committee asked me to do this. You know, I'll reach out to the four colleagues that were in that meeting. I'll explain this to you, I don't want to take up any time today. Thank you.
Okay.
Just with the Dearborn Education Foundation, they're having their annual golf outing coming up. So that is going to be Friday, September thirtieth. It'll be a new location at Taylor Meadows Golf.
And I believe, I see that they elected new co-chairs.
They have co-chairs, yes.
Hussein Hashem and John Zadig.
So just real quick, that was it for the committee reports? I'm assuming we're onto commentary?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just wanted to.
Continue onto Board, Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Anyone else?
Commentary?
Commentary?
Yeah.
Trustee Moses?
Well, I'm very excited for the new school year. So, and I'm looking forward to it as we're going back this year. I just want to mention that there are a lot of parents who are still perhaps looking forward to enroll their kids in our programs. And we do have the virtual option as well for those parents who actually liked it and wanted to continue on with it.
Hold on just one moment, Trustee Moses.
Yeah.
Would y'all please take it out in the hall? We are still conducting a meeting, and we can hear you. Thank you. I'm sorry to, the excitement, I understand, but we have to conduct our meeting. Trustee Moses, please go ahead.
Thank you. So I would hope that those things would be pushed as those last-minute deciders would be captured and be enrolled in our district. And, yeah, I'm also equally excited for the day, first day of school.
Absolutely. One thing I just want to say real quick, congratulations to our summer graduates.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Congratulations to all of you, wish you wonderful success in the future, and we expect great things from you. Anyone else? Next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Your head, Trustee Petrikov first.
Swivel head. Yeah. I just want to make sure, since we're talking about the virtual school, for the report on the, what the, not the attendance, the, who signed up? Yeah, for, from K through twelve. So that, I just want to see if we're still, yeah, being successful with that going into a second year.
And we did open, you know, to outside for the K-five, but we haven't had a large enrollment for outside.
Did we have any kind of advertisement for that at all? Or was that?
We didn't.
Kind of a late?
Yeah, I mean, we did do publications through David's Department, but we didn't do an aggressive advertisement by paying. And part of it, I think, was because we were trying to balance the ability with the budget and what we need to do, you know, there's a certain number that you wanted, and Ms. Peterson was looking at that. But it's some things that we can look at moving forward.
Right, but I'd like to see how that is shaping up.
Sure, we can get that.
There was a flyer that went out to homes.
Oh, okay.
There was a flyer, I saw it, and I seen multiple times on social media. There was a flyer that went out, because I know.
About the virtual option.
There started a lot of questions.
Was it mailed?
It was mailed, yeah. And there was some people were questioning.
Somebody thought I was old and didn't need it.
What's that?
I said somebody thought I was too old and didn't need it. Didn't hit my house.
Glenn, Glenn.
Yeah, I, no.
I do have one other thing I just thought of, that everybody's, oh, Trustee Moses?
I have requests for information. I believe two meetings before this, at the end of the school year, we asked that we have a presentation on social emotional learning at the September meeting.
I'm planning on doing that in November.
November?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like also something about the care to the core. I know it happens toward the spring, but we'd like some kind of similar event to happen in the fall, since we're coming back from summer. But we want to have strict more, and focus more on those core values in the beginning of the year, rather than we wait until the spring, and then we start talking about courtesy, honesty, and our core values, and respect, and treatment of others. Because as we could see the public discourse right now, where folks are unfortunately forgetting those core values. So whatever we can do, as, I'm requesting actually, perhaps maybe even a presentation in this boardroom about core values.
Sure, I have a question about that as well, because you've made a good point. I know that when we first started doing the bullying program, our response to bullying behavior, all of the schools would have a kickoff event every year. And I know with the pandemic and being closed, things just kind of got, you know, put aside. And I would just like an update, if those events are still going on? I think that they should, I think they're valuable to our students, get everybody back in the mind of caring about each other and being considerate and being a good citizen. And all of those things that we need to do to be part of society and part of the school that we belong to. So if you could just see where we are on those things, because I know the pandemic has kind of pushed a lot of the things that we always did aside. Trustee Barry?
I might be wrong on this, but we went away from that event before the COVID. Is that, am I correct to think that way?
Specifically, but there were still, each building, I still believe, did have particular bits.
We need to do more, not less of them, we need to do more.
I agree.
To bring out.
We would have like a district-wide kickoff, and then they kind of went to building, that each individual buildings would do something.
Was it Jackie Brevet, when she was around, that kind of took the lead on that?
And Ms. Charles.
Yeah.
And the Corrigan, and the Nene after that.
It was a committee challenge.
So, yeah, I would love to see more of that.
I would too, I think it's very important, especially now, because our students are suffering, and our community at large is suffering with just traumas from COVID and everything that we've gone through the last few years. I think any way to bring the community together, engaged in positive dialogue, positive thought process.
Awareness too, yeah.
And just be aware of the great things that we're doing, and I think that's wonderful.
Before we move on, you should give the microphone to Dr. Maleko. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Trustee Deambrosio? I'm sorry, I missed what you said. Trustee Barry?
Go ahead. I was saying, before you move on to the next item, give the microphone to Dr. Maleko.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Bring it to your attention, go ahead, sir.
Talking about that, I happened to be with someone yesterday that kind of brought up the social life for children with autism and everything. And she said that it's kindly disappeared in this town, that there's nothing for these kids to really do socially to get involved with the community. And she said she would really like to see the community and the schools, you know, take hold and get involved in some of these activities.
I agree, that's excellent.
That might be a good, you know, for the city relations and the new Department of Public Health kind of thing. I think we could coordinate a joint kind of either program or at least an awareness for those types of opportunities in our community of students who are otherly abled in a variety of ways. So we might want to have that conversation there.
Well, I was going to take it a step further, and we can expand it to many of the nonprofits that are in the area as well, because they might be able to. With COVID, a lot of the activities, they had to shut down, but they're starting to open up. So I think a lot of those sort of social aspects that they had are probably starting to come to conversations to their boards. It'd probably be a good thing to reach out to various nonprofits.
Do you know, or does anyone know if there was these stars? They do it before the homecoming every year?
They did have that, yes.
They didn't have stars this year?
Oh, yeah, the All-Stars, yes, they did.
Yes, they did.
They did. It was, they had a little bit of difficulty with it because of accessibility, apparently.
I was just reaching out to the Arc in Dearborn.
Okay. Because I think we can do more of that, for sure. Absolutely, good suggestion.
I know with Blue Hands United, Mayor Hamud took that to the next level. I attended an event, I don't know if Trustee Moses was there, or if Trustee Thorp was there. But, yeah, he's involved in the police department and the fire department, and maybe that's a good idea. I mean, what else can we do? I know we support Blue Hands United in our schools at Lori, at UNIS, and many other buildings, but what can we do?
Trustee Barry, could you add that to the agenda for the next city relations?
I already, I was writing it down when Trustee Petrikov started saying that, so. Yes, thank you.
President McDonald, you and I talked about maybe having Mr. Salee, who's coming up on an autism presentation.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Salee was at that event too.
Oh, was he?
Yeah, he was, he was. Part of his team too was there too.
Not to add to the toll, but I know media specialists were mentioned today. But I'd like, if we can get a report, if their staffing was increased or decreased over the years, let's say over the past four years.
Okay. Is that everyone? I have one more piece of commentary that I just.
We also have a, an introduction to be made.
That's what I was trying to tell you, give the microphone to Dr. Maleko.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we are excited. I know she got over here from another commitment she has, and we are very excited. We have our new health, safety, and security supervisor, Ms. Danielle Elzayat. Let's give her a big round of applause. Yes, please do. And I can tell you, you know, in taking our time, that's what we did. We had, I'll just say, I made some reference calls, outstanding, outstanding reference checks from your, your people that you've worked for in your past and currently, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you all very much for this opportunity. I want to thank each and every one of you. I'm really excited to work for the district. I want to thank Dr. Maleko for having the faith in me to take this position. And today was my last official day with Wayne County. I'd like to thank the folks over at Wayne County for the sixteen years that that was my home. Warren Evans was a great leader and had a lot of trust in me in leading the people of Wayne County in Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Asad Turfi gave me great opportunities too, and I wanted to thank him too. I want to thank my family, my husband's with me today, my kids are at home watching. And I really, really appreciate this, and I know that we're going to do amazing things together. And each and every one of you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Trustee Barry?
Let's take it a step further, yeah, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. But Ms. Elzayat is a colleague of ours, she serves on a school board in the nearby district. And thank you for that. Personally, I know that Ms. Elzayat is a third-generation community servant, so thank you for all that she do.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Trustee Barry, thank you.
Why, you're going to have to hit the ground running, that's all I guess.
I will. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you. And just for the community, this is a commitment, you know, we're bringing in qualified people because we know that whether it be during COVID, pandemic safety, active shooter that we're doing, additional trainings this week with our staff. We're actually, and I appreciate President Mazza being involved in that, and Mr. Martin and Strati really took the lead on planning for some of these events with the Dearborn Police, to have our teachers back this week for additional training, because we know that's on the minds, not only in Dearborn, in the state and in the nation for that matter, about health, safety, security. And, you know, we dealt with the pandemic, but, you know, what is the next challenge we might have? So that preparation is important, regardless of what the situation is. We have to have those emergency plans. And she's very, I know Ms. Elzayat has a lot of experience in reviewing school-level plans as well. So we're excited, and it's a commitment to the community, to our staff, to make sure our staff and students are safe at schools.
Thank you, welcome aboard. Anyone else? Then I am just going to mention a couple of things that had slipped my mind during commentary, but I wanted to mention them. We had a pop team, if anyone that's aware of the pop team, it's Pockets of Perception. And it is part of the Dearborn Community Funds Initiative. And they take students from the district and also outside of the district, and they do art projects around the city. And there's a lot of them, some of them are murals for walls, some of them have been sculptures. You may have seen the tile wall at the John Vingle Station. Those are all done by students. So I just wanted to congratulate the latest pop team. They did a mural on Michigan Avenue, and I want to thank Trustee Watts for being there to congratulate the all women's team this year, it was all young ladies. And they did an amazing job. If you have a moment, I cannot think of the address, but it is on the north side of Michigan Avenue, and do you remember the cross?
Slough.
Closer Slough.
Slough, okay, yes.
By my house.
A wonderful mural, and there is a lot of thought done as to the meaning of the mural. So if you can, that information is accessible online too. So please enjoy the art projects that are popping up around the city, thanks to our talented students. And the one other thing that I wanted to say is, there was an announcement, and I am sorry I didn't write it down, and now it escapes me.
Well, just interrupt me if you think of it.
Well, I think we're about done, what's the next item?
Future meeting dates. Future meeting dates, Monday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, P-12 Board of Education meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Ranchy Boardroom. Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee meeting, six PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. And Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment? I think someone should text Trustee Thorp and tell him that the meeting, he's not out.
You were just, you're reading my mind. I'm getting ready to.
He likes it nice and short.
Yes, he does.
He likes to be punctual.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and we are adjourned.